All right. Good evening. Councilmember Howe and Deputy Mayor Lamb, I assume you can hear us okay?
Yes.
Cool.
Can you hear me?
I just can't hear Amy yet. We're still working on the volume portion. Maybe try one more time.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Awesome. Cool. All right. I'm going to call this meeting to order Tuesday, October 11th. City Council's special meeting starting at 5:30 today. I will have our city clerk do the roll call.
Mayor Kaylee Clark here. Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe. Councilmember Kent Trin.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Retusha Andipura.
Here.
Councilmember Rosina Farrell.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Councilmember Trin, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'll go ahead and read the land acknowledgement statement this evening. "We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial, and happy Indigenous Peoples' Day as of yesterday to everybody." Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda. Second?
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, 7-0. We are approved. So first, right off the bat, we do have an executive session to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1G. So it looks like initially we have 45 minutes. Does that sound good to everyone? Cool. All right, so we will be back at... Pam. 6:20. Thank you. All right. Welcome back, everybody. So next, we are going to move to public comment. Do we have, I don't think, anyone in the room, right? Oh, we do. Yes. Hello. Okay. I don't have a sheet, sorry. Cool. See, yeah, so we'll start in person first and then we'll move to Zoom. So yeah, go ahead.
Snuck in on you. Good evening, council. Ladies and gentlemen, very nice to see everyone back in person on the dais. It's where you guys all belong. It's much better than Zooming, if possible. My name's Tom Odell. I'm a 33-year resident of Samamish. And I have also... It was on. Let me move it up, or I'll just hold it. Is this better? Okay. Again, we'll rewind. My name is Tom Odell. I'm a 33-year resident of Samamish, former member of this Agus body, and now I'm watching from the sidelines. Tonight, I came to chat with you a little bit about Samamish seniors. Samamish, in the almost 24 years it's been since we incorporated, has done a tremendous job of building the city from not very much. But we've put a lot of effort into the youth because we've been a young community. And we've done an awful lot for the other parts of the city as well. But one group that seems to have not done well in terms of getting its fair share is the senior population. And I have to say, yes, I'm one of those. So is my wife. I was looking at the demographics for Samamish tonight, and it was interesting that the median age of Samamish is one year higher than that of the state of Washington. So me, we're not as young as we think. I don't have the latest percentiles, but I do recall from when I was mayor, we had suddenly 15% of our population was 65 or more. I'm going to be looking with great interest at what's coming. I'm here tonight to ask that the city council give serious consideration to fully supporting the Samamish seniors in their request for funding support from the city and also for facility support as well. This group tried to get going in the Boys and Girls Club prior to COVID. Unfortunately, COVID shut that down, so they had hiatus, just like we did being a council in person. But they're back at it. And I would love to have all of you, every one of you, put your full support behind their request for funding and other assistance. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you so much. So next, I believe we'll move to online.
Yes. If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. For attendees who are joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. Currently, I have three attendees that would like to speak. I will promote them in the order that they have raised their hand. Mary Victor.
Good evening. This is Mary Victor. And I wanted to speak tonight because today and last week, I had sent information on the need for a stormwater CIP listed for Tamarack drainage improvements. I also wanted to speak tonight to let you know that I am preparing other follow-up emails in order to give you a little bit of coverage and background and history so that you can be more prepared. The one I sent today as follow-up 01 tells how Tamarack is unique, that there are very few clusters of private roads, and that Tamarack is a historic plat for the city's definition because it was done before 1977. Also, a portion of Inglewood, which is an 1889 plat, does not have public roads and has similar potential things, but they also have development that occurred later, so there are stormwater in some of those areas. So Holly is a private gated community with a golf course on much flatter land, and it was developed during the 1970s. It has drainage, and it had two developers throughout its time. It's also at 500 feet elevation and is much flatter. Tamarack itself has steep slopes and landslide hazards, which have been mapped since 1990, as required by the GMA. Also, to provide council and city staff information, I wrote down the timeline of the subdivision regulations and the stormwater changes that have happened over the years. There were not comprehensive subdivision regulations enabled in the state of Washington until 1969. At that time, the population on the plateau was fewer than 5,000. And then recommendations and guidelines for drainage were started in 1969 through '71, and by 1977, they were fully required. And then flow control was added in 1979. So Tamarack was platted in 1964, before all those things happened. What happened was King County wanted to collect taxes and payments so that they had the King County assessor record the two-page survey that is Tamarack. So there is no developer, or wasn't. But we do have easements for road ingress egress that's going in and out and for utility purposes. But each vacant lot grows just one house at a time. Even adjacent lots don't use short plat or subdivision regulations. They just build by infill, one house at a time. And 40 pounds have been built and permitted by the city, and 20 of those are over the area of concern, and there are still 40 vacant lots remaining. So I just wanted to say that the entirety of Tamarack is not affected by the drainage complaints that have been done, but there are the most steep hazardous areas that are adversely impacted, and there is infiltration of stormwater and septic systems. It's been overused. So I hope that you'll read my emails tonight or today and this week to educate yourselves. And thank you for the questions that you're asking for this important project that needs to be a stormwater CIP. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. I'll now promote the next commenter. Next commenter. Are you there?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Marnie Maraldo, and I'm the Executive Director of Influence the Choice. Influence the Choice is a grassroots nonprofit dedicated to the prevention and reduction of substance use among young people by promoting behavioral health of students, and we're the only nonprofit focused on this work within the Samamish area. I'd like to start by thanking you for considering an additional nearly quarter of a million dollars to meet the human service needs of Samamish community. As an elected official myself, I understand the important decisions you have when it comes to prioritizing taxpayer dollars to best meet the needs of the community. I'm here tonight to ask that you consider how the work of Influence the Choice supports nearly 3,300 Issaquah School District middle and high school students that live in Samamish, and how the city of Samamish can financially support the continued work of Influence the Choice. We're dedicated to preventing youth substance use by promoting the behavioral health of students, and we've been doing so for 10 years. We're currently in the last year of a grant from the CDC, and we have seen amazing results from our efforts, including a reduction of 10th, 12th graders that say they have recently consumed alcohol from 43% back in 2010 to just 18% this past year. Even cannabis use, commonly referred to as marijuana, has seen a significant reduction in use despite becoming legal in the state of Washington since Influence the Choice began its work. But the tragic loss of life due to suicide and substance use overdose, such as fentanyl, has impacted communities across the country, including Samamish. The 2021 Healthy Youth Survey revealed an increase in stress, anxiety, and depression, and suicidal ideation. Nearly 500 students in the Issaquah School District seriously contemplated suicide in the past year. While less than 1% of students share that they have used illegal substances such as heroin, that still refers to approximately 150 students susceptible to fentanyl poisoning. And there's a link between behavioral health and substance misuse. That's why prevention work is so important. At Influence the Choice, we are using positive behavior systems to help students build skills to combat stress, anxiety, and depression so they don't need to go to substances to cope with things. And this year, we have an initiative to hold community dinners with prevention education for members of the community that may not speak English as their primary language, such as Spanish, Chinese, and Hindi. So I'm asking this evening that you consider if you'd like to partner with Influence the Choice in this work, or more accurately, help us continue that work next year and into the future. Without the support of our community, Influence the Choice will be gone when our grant is gone next year. But the need for prevention work never ends. We ask that you consider $25,000 in funding for Influence the Choice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll now promote the last attendee. One moment, please. Jennifer?
Hi. Hi, guys. You guys have seen me often, so probably doesn't need an introduction, but my name is Jennifer Coons, and I am the Executive Director of Essence Health and Research Foundation. And you guys just received a really large, not really large, but a decent presentation this last week to explain some of the sort of what all these cities, I think Samamish, Issaquah, and Kirkland had all kind of had rubrics and notes about why they took out or didn't actually recommend funding for Essence Health and Research Foundation. So first, I want to thank you. It took five weeks to get all that information, but I especially want to thank Amy Lamb for just really kind of making sure that I got that information so I could analyze everything for Samamish and be able to talk with you guys tonight. So thank you again for that, even though it was a little tenacious. But what I wanted to sort of add to the conversation tonight is really, again, Human Services Commission is presenting to you tonight. Essence Health and Research Foundation doesn't have a recommendation yet. And my biggest recommendation for you guys is twofold. One of these two choices would be wonderful if you guys could consider it. The first one I mentioned is that there are duplicates who are getting funding. So the fact that Essence Health and Research Foundation is a duplicate is not too much of an issue, but no other nonprofit has a healthcare model with nutrition and yoga and crisis services. And that was an expansion on services this year. So Issaquah Food Bank got pretty much all of the, a ton of that funding for all the food-based services. I think St. Vincent de Paul got a lot, but they also do rent. And so what I would love to see you guys do is split the funding from Issaquah Food Bank, take a little bit out of that funding and stick, put it into Essence Health and Research Foundation. Or what could really be wonderful is that you guys increase the human services funding for human services grant up to $700,000. That leaves a gap of about $17,000 that you could use to help Essence Health and Research Foundation and a couple of these other nonprofits that just spoke to you tonight. So 7 is a great number. So $700,000 would be even better for you guys. Instead of doing that long 600, 800, 6, whatever that number is, go across the board and go $700,000 and fill a couple of these gaps that were missed in the recommendations tonight. So that's about what I have to say for you guys tonight. I know it's informative, and I'll probably be talking to you guys again. But good luck on everything, and hopefully we'll be able to come out of this thing with ourselves put together and having funding for our nonprofits. So thanks so much for your consideration. Take care. Bye.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to give public comment tonight? Please raise your hand. Looks like that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. So our first topic of presentation, I want to welcome our Human Services Commission. Thank you, everybody. I know two of you, so I'd love if you introduced yourself as well, if that's all right. And I believe, I don't know who's taking it over, Mike or Rita?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. Mike Sugg, City Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office. To my left is our resident Human Services Expert, Rita Bod, our Senior Human Services Coordinator. And we are very pleased tonight to introduce our Human Services Commissioners that are here with us this evening to deliver their recommendation for 2023, 2024 human services grant funding. In the room with us tonight, we have Chair Joyce Bottenberg. If you just raise your hands, they call it your name. Vice Chair Julie Varness. Commissioner Jody Nishioke. Commissioner Stan Gunno. Commissioner Rich Benak. And Commissioner, oh, excuse me, who am I? Oh, excuse me, yes. Our seventh Commissioner, Mark Heilmann, was not able to join us tonight, but he is here with us in spirit. The development of this recommendation has been a long process and required a lot of time by our Commissioners. And the presentation tonight will summarize at a very high level their process and their recommendation. But I would just like to start by recognizing the efforts of our volunteer coordinators or Commissioners in getting us to this point. And with that said, our Chair and Vice Chair are going to deliver the presentation tonight. So when they are ready, please kick us off.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and all others in the room. I'm Joyce Bottenberg, Chair of the Human Services Commission. And this is my seventh year with the city's human services, with this city's commission and as President and Assessor, the Task Force. Our agenda is to present and request council approval of the Human Service Commission's recommendations for the 2023 and 2024 years. I will start with the introduction of our Human Services Commission members who have been introduced here. You can see their pretty pictures. Okay. The next slide. This is the Commission's experience. We have highlighted Commissioner experience here. As you can see, we are a highly qualified group with a passion for human services. We bring a wide range of knowledge and deep experience to the commission. Not going to ask you to match who's who. Our human service needs. Let us highlight a few of the Samamish demographics. Our foreign-born population increased from 23% in 2010 to 31% in 2020. 34 speak a language other than English at home. The 2020 American Community Survey shows that our youth population at 30% is higher than King County average of 22%. Housing affordability. 33% of our rental households spent over 30% of income on housing and may have difficulty affording other necessities such as food, transportation, and medical care. This also applies to 21% of householders with mortgages who may also be cost burdened. Understanding community needs. The Human Service Task Force in 2017 worked with a Burke study to do a citywide and beyond needs assessment identifying needs, resources, and service gaps. This was completed in 2017 and presented to the City Council in March 2018. The Commission used this needs assessment as well as having yearly discussions with providers, over 37 providers since 2019, and attending joint Human Service Commission meetings with our peers from the cities of Bellevue, Kirkland, Issaquah, and Redmond. We have covered a variety of topics, including collective regional responsibility towards homelessness, understanding issues faced by grassroots nonprofits. We attended a training to help us develop a racial equity lens in grant-making. We built familiarity and comfort with challenges of diversity, equity, and inclusion issues in grant-making and reviewing grant applications through an equity lens. This is a quick snapshot of an issue in each of the priority areas. The needs assessment revealed Samamish should focus its resources on five priority needs. Just domestic violence. 27 of women will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. Basic needs. Approximately 4,400 people in Samamish live under 300% of the poverty level. Seniors. 35% of residents over age 75 have a disability in Samamish. These statistics are updated based on the 2020 American Community Survey five-year estimates. Cultural inclusion. We have an increasingly diverse community. 34% of residents speak a language other than English at home. This is up from 24% just five years ago. The last statistic is startling. 19% of Samamish teens considered suicide last year. One in five. The source for this is the 2021 Healthy Youth Survey. In our recent Commission Learning Year 2021, we hosted panels to learn about emerging human service needs. We spoke to 21 different community groups and providers to help us better understand new and emerging human service issues, particularly resulting from COVID. The Commission was able to dig deep and learn firsthand from providers in a variety of areas. The Grant Review Process. The challenge. The need is great. 72 programs applied for funding. This included $1,170,062 a year total funding request. That's 67% versus last grant cycle. Our budget in 2021, 2022 was $443,45. This is 37% of the amount requested. Again, the request for grant funding was 67% higher than grant request in the 2021, 2022 grant cycle. All cities experienced big uptick in amount requested. Several reasons for this. Inflation, paying staff a living wage, and sustaining programs that were introduced through one-time COVID funding. Our Grant Review Overview here. This slide provides a high-level overview of the grant review process. Our Human Services Commission has gone through review, debate, and discussion to bring this recommendation to the City Council. We use a score sheet to ensure consistency. Applications are initially filtered using this score sheet. The sheet evaluates applications in five key areas. Samamish Needs, Service Delivery Approach, Program Accessibility, Service Units and Outcomes, and Budget. At a first touch, each Commissioner used a score sheet to initially filter applications, evaluating applications in key areas, notably Samamish Needs. One of the five sections addressed program accessibility, where Commissioners reviewed applications to how well the program addresses affordability and equity, how well the program addresses persons with disability, how well the program addressed language and culturally specific needs. Our Grant Review Approach includes assigning Commissioners to subgroups. The grants are reviewed independently using the score sheet. The subgroups discuss and debate scores and develop a preliminary funding recommendation. The recommendations are presented to the whole commission. All 72 applications were discussed by the commission. The Grant Review Reproach. We worked to develop base recommendations at the current budget level of $443,45. That was the 21, 22 years. This budget would not allow us to fund a variety of programs that we found to be valuable for residents. We agreed to recommend additional funding. Our Vice Chair, Commissioner Varness, will lead you into our recommendation. Thank you.
Hello. Okay, so we, the Human Services Commission, is recommending $682,736 per year in the 2023, 2024 grant funding cycle. On this slide, you'll see how it's broken out between the five groups. What I'd like to also point out, though, is that there's overlap within all of these groups. So in our next slide here, it's a lovely depiction of how all of those funding needs intersect. Just as a couple examples, there might be a survivor of domestic violence who may need mental health support and basic need support. And by funding those other programs, we are also helping that survivor of domestic violence. Another example is providing culturally specific foods under basic needs also touches the cultural inclusion group. We also wanted to give an example of the deep impact of our funding. So as you heard from Commissioner Bottenberg, we learned about the impact of COVID on teen mental wellness and the increased levels of anxiety and depression that brought. In addition, you also heard that 19%, one in five of Samamish teens have considered suicide in the past year. So by funding mental wellness to the tune of about $185,000, that gives us one full-time therapist seeing over 200 residents annually. That's Samamish residents. It provides comprehensive behavioral health programs. It funds mental health and substance use disorder counseling, psychiatric services, and case management. It funds culturally nuanced mental health support, peer-led mental health support systems, as well as connection programs like King County 211, Crisis Line, and Teen Link. So that's just an example of how deep the impact goes with our funding. So that's just an example of how deep the impact goes with our funding. On this slide, on the right-hand, excuse me, on the left-hand side, is a comparative chart of how Samamish funds on a per capita basis as compared to our local area. Keeping in mind that we are the newest commission and we are also the youngest city, we are making progress. So Redmond is funding at a level of $33.63 per capita. And with our recommended funding of $682,000, we would be funding at a level of $10.02 per capita. But on the right-hand side, I'd like to point out that we've made great progress over the year between the work of the commission and working with the council to get more funding. So over the five cycles shown there, it's a 182% increase from $3.55 in the 15, 16 cycle to $10.02 in this current cycle should we receive or should you grant the funding that we're recommending. And then I also just wanted to point to, in the memo, where we state that we found it very challenging to address the needs of the community within the budgeted amount. The additional requests that we're asking for allows the city to maintain its participation in regional programming while funding critical services in areas such as mental wellness and basic needs. We heard from many of the nonprofits that they are facing increased costs to deliver services such as salary increases to pay a living wage and then the impacts of inflation, all while trying to meet increased community needs. So in summary, this commission worked very hard to develop a recommendation based on the $444,000 base that we were anticipating the budget would be. We are recommending, however, that the council approve an additional $242,391,000 per year for the grant program. This additional funding will help ensure our resources are prioritized, driving real, noticeable, deep impact to the residents of Samamish. Thank you, and we'll open it to questions.
Thank you all so much. I love that you went through all 72 applications. I'm sure that was no easy task. I really appreciate it. Yeah, a stack. Yeah, this is great. So I will open it up. It looks like, I don't know if I had, so it's either Councilmember Howe or Councilmember Stewart. One of you is first. Stewart? Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I wasn't able to jot down all of your stats, but a couple that I captured that is just remarkable. As you pointed out, one in five teens have contemplated suicide, and one in three and a half women in Samamish are experiencing some form of domestic violence. That's just staggering. So I really can't say thank you enough for the work that you guys do. I'm so excited to see you making a recommendation that almost gets us out of the basement for our neighboring cities, and it is great progress. This may be somewhat inflammatory, but in addition to the money that you asked, if you could, would there be others that you felt were worthy if you had even more money? Or did you feel like you made the recommendations on those that really met the bar?
Do you want to speak to that? Go ahead. Of course.
If there was like one more, do you feel like there's something urgent? I mean, I know you guys are very prudent in your recommendations, and I really do appreciate that. And I appreciate that you gave sort of a base budget and then an additional budget. But is there like a, we really wanted this one additional one that might hit one of these really key? And again, I'm sorry I didn't get down all of the stats, but some of these key areas where we're in such need. I mean, I'm hearing from teachers and students that in this post-pandemic world, the mental health crisis is kind of staggering, and the availability of mental health providers is unfortunately very challenging. So I know when we provide those funds and we can secure mental health providers, it's not even just the money about doing it, but it's actually creating that ability for people to receive those services. So I didn't know if there was anything else there.
I think we would look at our mental health and our basic needs, for sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That's a tough question to answer. Councilmember Howe?
Thank you. Again, thank you for your service and thank you for all the work on this. I know that this represents hours and hours of effort. My question has to do with operations and around your cost of operations. Do you have a cost of operations? Like many nonprofits that they have an overhead fee. And I'm wondering, do you have overhead? Do you have, are you missing something you wish you had? And I guess I'm going to specifically, you mentioned a study in 2021. Those studies have to be replicated year after year or you lose your data. So do you have the, where does that funding come from? And is that a side budget? Does that make sense?
Not yet.
We don't, ourselves don't have costs. And we use the staff to gather the statistics for us. Rita, Mike, do you want to speak to that?
Yes. So as you can see in the PowerPoint, we've quoted our sources, and oftentimes it's the American Community Survey. One of them was a Healthy Youth Survey. So those tend to be updated, and then we kind of update that information and provide that to the commission.
And that's all. Those stats are all specific, they're close enough to Samamish or they're regional?
Yes. No, those are Samamish-specific data.
Component. Okay. Is there a component that you wish you did have that would help make your job easier? Besides additional funding, which I already know?
I could speak to more staff for Rita.
Do you feel, okay, well?
There are more than two in each of Redmond and Issaquah.
And, oh, I'm sorry. One item that the commission has talked about was updating the needs assessment. It's a little outdated, and like you mentioned, we update it with statistics, but we'd like to have that updated if possible.
Okay. And so that would require funding?
Yes.
Do you know how much?
Do we want to look at the cost of the Burke study back in 2017?
Oh, but see, that's the one I keep thinking, going back to. I just, I guess I'm trying to make sure that the numbers and the data that we have rolling forward is as accurate as we can make it. And I'm trying to understand if there's a gap or a shortfall in terms of what we need to support getting the accurate data and information so that we're able to assess programs as they roll forward to ensure that they are in fact delivering the services that they are proposing to do so.
We do have quarterly reports that come in, and we do have ongoing communication. And of course, our study panel years are very, very helpful in updating us.
In addition, I think to have Rita describe the reporting that she gets.
Sure. So Councilmember Howe, so when we go into contract with a nonprofit provider, once we provide and allocate funding, they actually have to provide us with quarterly reports and end-of-year demographics. And then that's a reimbursement model. So we will only provide that funding if they've been able to achieve their service units. So we have constant dialogue with organizations that we fund. Does that answer your question?
I think it does. The last question has to do with populations. We talked about Redmond and their high level of support per capita, which is outstanding. They also have a different demographic in that half of their residents are non-homeowners, for example. Do you, when you look across the different organizations that we are in that alliance partnership together, which is the city that we are most like in terms of demographic?
That's a good question. Years ago, I would have said Redmond, but not now.
Yeah, it has changed.
Issaquah? Probably Issaquah.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate your help.
Thank you to the commission for doing such an excellent job. I have three questions. The first one is kind of something that Councilmember Howe alluded to is the per capita funding. I know as a city, we are very generous, but yet, you know, the per capita grant funding is lower. Is that something also to do with the revenues that come in and the, there's just the sources of revenue that our city has? And is it just that we can't give more? I mean, all these other cities that you've listed have, you know, other base that generates more revenue. I was just wondering if that was also a great factor. I think that probably might be a question for staff or city manager.
Yeah, so Councilmember Minderper, so we started off with a very low number back before the commission was formed. And so at that time, the only city that funded less than us was Des Moines. And so as Commissioner Varness alluded, like, you know, the trajectory is going up. I just feel like the commission have always done their due diligence to look and review applications and find what they think is necessary. As, do you want to add to that, Mike?
Sorry, my microphone wasn't turning on there. To the question of revenue base, you know, our grants are funded solely out of our general fund revenues. We don't have a dedicated stream for that, and I can't speak to what the other cities have and how they fund their human services programs, but that may be a factor. You know, we don't receive our community development block grant, community development block grant funds directly. We contributed them to a partnership that gets distributed through the Joint Recommendations Committee. So things like that, you know, we don't take that funding indirectly and count it as one of our streams of revenue for grant programs. That certainly could contribute to the difference in per capita funding that we're seeing there.
Great, thanks. And are we also allowed as a city to apply for grants to further distribute them to community groups?
Are you aware of any grants, Rita, that we could apply for?
No, I'm not. I'm just thinking of CDBG, but that is gone. Yeah, apart from that, no, I'm not aware of any.
So looking at the table of your recommendations, I think I saw a couple agencies listed multiple times. So have they done different applications? I mean, have they applied for different needs? And then my one specific question was for, it was for emergency and transitional shelter. I know Lifewire and the Sophia's Way has been awarded. So I was just trying to understand what's the difference between what they provide for.
So, yes, we've had multiple applications from the same agency for different programs.
And the Lifewire?
I can answer that.
Go ahead.
Yep. So the actual difference is that Sophia Way is the shelter for women, as we know on the east side. And then as far as a Lifewire transitional shelter, that's specifically for domestic violence survivors. So that's a difference, and that's in a secure location. So that's the difference between the two applications.
It also includes some other services?
Yes, and also emergency services, yeah.
There were other services included on the Lifewire? Great, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lam?
Thank you for all your work, the Human Services Commission. I just had a quick question, and that is, is it harder for newer organizations to get funding versus somebody that has applied like over and over again? I mean, it's sort of like the chicken or the egg. You know, oftentimes you can't provide services because you don't have any money to, you know, to fund your organization. So are the standards a little different for if you're a brand-new organization versus an established one?
Rita, you want to take that, Rita? Yeah, so I'd love to answer that. So as city staff, me and my peers, we understood that, you know, to make that jump from being a small grassroots nonprofit to actually receiving city funding is a big jump. So we proactively connected with lots of small grassroots organizations a year before applications were even due. And we did a lot of coffee chats, informal discussions, workshops, to really try and demystify the process of applying for funding. And I really feel like that really served us well because we had a number of new grassroots organizations applying. And in fact, in the recommendation that the commission's bringing to you, we have two new, we have 10 new programs being funded, and four of those are grassroots organizations that are funded for the first time. So yes, it is difficult, but I think as staff, we have really tried to lower that barrier and answer questions ahead of time before applications were due.
That's awesome. Thanks, Rita.
Hi, I'm Commissioner Nishioka. I just wanted to add that when you're looking at small grassroots organizations, they do serve a big role for particularly marginalized communities often that we do want to reach. And the work of the staff that Rita just spoke to is really, really important. However, we are tasked with taxpayer money, and we do need to make sure that organizations are actual 511(c)(3) organizations that are in compliance with the law. And we do need to make sure that they have accounting systems and certain systems in place so that the money is well-spent and tracked and they're able to meet our reporting requirements, which from a grassroots perspective, and I work at a organization, a nonprofit, that serves many by, community of color-led and serving nonprofits, grassroots organizations that we, that for me is really important that we serve, but it's really important that they have a certain level of capacity to be able, for us as stewards of taxpayer money, to make sure that they can manage their programs and spend the money as they, as we expect them to, and as they are staying they are, and that they have systems of tracking and reporting. And so there is a level of, for us to look into their application to determine if they have that minimum capacity. It's not that we don't want to serve them. We really do want to support those types of organizations because they do serve a really important role in the community. But as a public funder, we have a certain level of expectancy because we are stewards of public funds. Private funders, like small family foundations or even large foundations, like the Gates Foundations, they can take greater risk than we can as stewards of public funding. So there's a little bit of, I hate to say that government does have a little more hoops that a lot of these nonprofits have to jump through because those groups are doing very, very worthy work. And some of them just don't quite have the capacity that we require, and it's unfortunate. But because we are stewards of public funds, we do feel a responsibility to look at the capacity of each of those organizations that we do serve and make sure that they, we are confident in them. And staff provides a fair amount of support, and we take that into consideration as well, that we know our staff is going to work with them. And we've seen track records in the past, several of the last few years, where we have funded some organizations. I'm not saying they were all grassroots. Some of them may not even have been. And we'll look at their track record and we'll say, oh, they weren't able to perform. They weren't able to perform. They weren't able to perform. Why? Because they didn't have the capacity. And so we've learned from that and say, okay, we can't really justify funding this organization that we gave two years already and they weren't able to perform. They weren't able to report to us what they said they were going to do. So those are just some of the considerations that we take into consideration when we're looking at grassroots organizations and recognize that they do serve a very worthy part of our community. And hopefully, they'll build that capacity so they can continue to do the work and qualify for our funding.
Thank you for the additional follow-up.
You must be the lawyer. All right. I think we're on Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank the commissioners for all your hard work. As our former commissioner, I understand these are volunteer hours, you put your own time into this. What a colossal project, 72 applications, and you went through every single one. Well done. Samamish is indebted to you for this time that you've devoted to this project. So thank you very, very much for that. I wanted to, I basically two questions. Is there anything else that you would like us to know that didn't make it into your presentation? Is there anything about this process, about this grant funding, or anything at all connected with this that you would like us to know that you weren't able to fully express in your presentation tonight?
Yeah, I think one of the things that Commissioner Nishioka said is, if you remember the slide that had the overlapping circle? That's really how this process looks. And if you look at these
And if you look at these, the names on the list of grantees, they are serving multiple of the needs areas that are, that are listed in our needs assessment and the learnings that we had over 2021.
Thank you. And my last question was, with any organization that was not successful, were they provided any feedback as to how they could be successful in the future with their application? Or if they were, if they wanted to receive that feedback, would they find it by watching your meetings and seeing the discussion and that kind of thing? And that would provide them with the feedback that maybe they would need to be more successful with their application going forward?
So I think, you know, Rita spoke to the process they went through, so I'd like to have her just speak a little bit more about how she's connected and, you know, had events to connect with nonprofits.
Yeah, so I'm happy to sit and discuss as to why a nonprofit didn't get funding. We also have to acknowledge that there are a lot of phenomenal nonprofits that do great work that didn't get funded. You know, unfortunately, you know, you know, the commission went through their due diligence and evaluated all the applications. But yes, absolutely, I'm happy to give feedback as to, and then there also, you know, all the meetings were public, they're all recorded. So the commission publicly discussed it as well. And I can also refer folks to the actual recordings as well.
Okay, thank you, Rita. Thank you, everybody. That was great.
Councilmember Trine?
Okay, so first question is, for clarification, it's, the ask is for $682,000 and change a year, so double it for a two-year cycle on our budget, correct? Okay, thanks. Second was, super concerned about the mental health and wellness of residents of Samamish and how about residents anywhere. And so by looking at your recommendation, it looks like you're shorting the organizations that asked for money, about $14 million, or $14,000 of their request, and then the recommended number. So if I added 14,000, I'm going to get to about 6,97, if I do my math, it's right about that. So is there any reason why we wouldn't offer a recommendation of about $700,000 and meet the request of your priority area of mental wellness?
That is your job. We would appreciate it.
Well, I would support that as a council member and with the profession that I work in and what I see every day during the school year, I would definitely think that we should at least consider that as an option. Thank you, Mayor.
I don't know which one was first. Councilmember Stewart?
Oh, sure. Similar to Councilmember Trine's comment, but maybe with a slightly different twist, I would like to see when you guys come back with your final recommendation, if you had a bucket C, you kind of have your base budget, and then you have your additional requests. If you had a bucket C, what would that look like? I am very concerned about mental health and particularly around the youth. So if you did have more funds, could you put, you know, the next five, for example, what those next five, if you have that information, what the next five recommendations would be if you had more money? Not that we can definitely guarantee that, but I would love to see what the next five, because I think Councilmember Trine assumed we'd sort of fully fund some of those requests. Maybe you'd fund a different organization for partial. I don't know. I'd love to see what, what those next five would be so that we can really take that into consideration. I'm just hearing so much in terms of the stress coming out of the community that while I know basic needs are obviously important and they create stress, the mental health needs are really distressing to me, just thinking about it. So I would love to see that when you guys come back, if you could.
Yeah, I think what we would do is we would go back and look at the evaluations that we did and the, you know, to get to the 682, we did have to make lower recommendations than we wanted to. So I think if we had more, we would go back to what the commission was looking at and make additional recommendations, if that's possible.
Yeah, I mean, there's no-
Yeah, be based on the, what we had already discussed.
Yeah, I'd love to see sort of that third category, maybe in a stacked rank order so that we can, you know, maybe give little chunks if we want to consider that. But I know, like you said, there are some pretty worthy organizations that didn't get any funding, and would any of those make the next cut if there was a little bit more? So we'd love to see that.
If I could just hop in here, the presentation that, the recommendation that we're presenting tonight was intended to be the commission's final recommendation. So if the council would like us to go back and revisit that, potentially creating a new bucket C or looking at the next five organizations that we might fund, it'd be great to get that direction from council as specific as possible because we are kind of running short on time with our budget process. And our commission meeting, which was scheduled to be tomorrow night, was canceled because everyone's here with us tonight. So we'll just need to schedule a special meeting, get that work done, and then bring it back to council in time for the budget approval. So a specific direction would be excellent.
So I thought it was coming back because you're not asking for action tonight, right?
So there's no action tonight. It's just a presentation, but basically, we're asking for council's consideration to approve this recommendation as part of the budget. So it's in the city manager's proposed budget recommendations.
We're definitely considering it. I think you're hearing that there might be, there might be some wiggle room, and we just don't know if there are more needs, if, what those next five might look like. I don't know.
So, go ahead, Rita.
Can I just clarify, when you say the next five, do you mean the next five in mental wellness or just the next five throughout all the funding?
Well, for me personally, it would be the next five mental wellness, if you had, you know, what the next five would be. But I think that's where you'll need kind of head nods from the council as a whole if they want to see anything else.
I think also, to your point, Mike, you're probably looking for some parameters, either like a dollar amount or something, so you're not just-
Well, but see, I want to just see the next five, what their recommendations would be. And then when we go through the budgeting process, we can make that determination. We can say, we just want the base budget, we want the base plus the next level, or we want the base plus the additional plus whatever ones we wanted to pick. And we can do that decision-making at the budget, like when we're approving the budget.
Yeah, is there, sorry, go ahead. Yeah, I guess I don't know if there's adequate time for you all to do that. The only reason I was saying a little more parameters is because some of them are very different numbers. And I know, like you said, you can also like reduce the amount you would give to each. So I don't know what council thinks, if anyone else has any other thoughts. Councilmember Napuray?
I think I probably want more clarity on, I think, the base, you know, request were for, base recommendation was for $440,345. The additional requests were for $242,391. So I think I would, again, maybe it's a refresher, and I'm looking at the city manager to see, how are we going to make these numbers work? Like, one of my first questions, like, where is that additional 242 coming from, from our budget? Is that something we already approved? I don't remember. And if we're asking for additional funding, you know, where will that come from, right? I think that's a question I have. And I am fairly confident of the list that the Human Services Commission has put together. And then also, I think we shouldn't forget that there are other agencies in the city of Samamish, and I'm looking at the school districts, who are also part of supporting mental health. So it's not just, you know, Samamish is not the only one who's providing this kind of service. I think I just want us to be, you know, the commission has put in tremendous amount of work. I think going back and redoing some of the stuff might set this grant cycle back maybe a little bit, I don't know. But I feel pretty comfortable with proceeding with the sort of enhanced level of recommendation that the commission has provided.
Thank you. And Councilmember Howe, sorry, I skipped over you.
It's fine. I felt, I felt slight, but I've recovered. But I would agree with Councilmember Napuray with the recommendation to proceed with the existing budget as presented. I did attend their meeting last month or whenever it was held. I saw the deliberations, I saw the care that they put into each dollar amount for each of the recommended agencies and feel confident that they have made wise selections. My question is actually to Mike Sugg and to Rita about the way that some cities, I believe, manage this particular aspect of their budget is not necessarily on a per capita, but a percentage of budget. And so if we want to put our money where our mouth is, if we say that human services deserves 7% of our budget, 10%, 15%, that means that that budget changes on an annual or biannual basis. However, it also guarantees that that fund will be there and that we're able to increase it over time as the city's able to do that. And I'd love to know, what other cities manage in particular human services in that, in that particular way, where it's a percentage of the budget versus per capita?
Yes, Councilmember Howe, thank you for the question. You are correct, there are, cities set different policies for human services funding. Some have them, some don't. And the ones that we've seen that have a policy usually set it at, like you said, roughly, it's usually 1% of the base budget, or the, excuse me, the biennial budget. Some also set a per capita funding level. I mean, both, both will adjust over time as, in the case of per capita, as residents move into the city, and in the case of the budget, as it, as it grows in general. If that's the will of the council, if you'd like us to come back with some research on, you know, what other cities are doing as far as policies for human services funding, we could do that research and come back to you. I just don't have that offhand at the moment.
I knew you wouldn't. It was more that it becomes a placeholder then that's permanent. It's a fixture. It doesn't, it doesn't become the bank account that you rob later when you don't have any money. It just becomes part of the budgeting process. So that's, it's something I'd, I'd like to know what the pros and cons are of that.
Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, so I agree with Howe and Councilmembers Howe and Napuray about moving forward with this particular recommendation. My addition or my thought was just, if there was an extra 14, there was, just to increase those ones that were in that one area. But I would also say, if we like the way it is, leave it that way. And then Scott, the last thing is, the question really is, again, when it comes to the budget, is this an increase, we're going to have to look for an increase in revenue? Or I'm going to have to look at cutting something else in the budget so that I can, so that this could happen?
Thank you, Councilmember Trine, for the question. Just to clarify, as Mike said previously, that we have not officially presented the budget yet. That will happen this Friday. We will submit the budget officially to council. So what you saw in the preview to that was, the base budget plus inflation was the original dollar amount that the, that the commission referred to. And then the additional piece is part of the city manager's recommended increase to the budget. So that, that reflects what you'll see as the proposed budget moving forward for your collective review. Councilmember Trine, as you and I think the rest of the council know, at this point, we are and have been budgeting beyond our actual revenues. And so we are proposing using fund balance to manage our budget for this biennium. And so any additions to the budget beyond what's currently recommended, which also includes using fund balance, would be the use of, a higher use of fund balance. So that's, that's just, that's the reality that we are in.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you.
Yeah. And again, I wasn't asking anybody to go back to the drawing board. I was definitely fine with what you guys proposed. I just want to point out, for those who weren't here, that even pre-pandemic, we had two overdoses at Skyline High School within months of each other. And that prompted the council at that time to increase funding on a one-time basis. I'd like to make that more permanent for more mental health services for the youth. And that was before the stresses that the pandemic brought to our student population. So while it is true that there are other organizations that do help, when we provided that funding after that, it wasn't just about the dollar amount. Again, it was about the fact that we contributed enough money that an additional counselor was able to be procured, which meant that people could actually get appointments. So part of the challenge that we have right now isn't just a dollar issue, it's that you can't get appointments with counselors. And I can tell you this from personal experience, that you cannot get in with a counselor. You can have the best insurance in the world, and you can't find an appointment. So by allocating money to organizations that can go and hire a counselor and make that counselor available to our youth, that can make all the difference. And I'm just going to remind, one in five of our youth are contemplating suicide right I can't think of a more important thing to spend our money on. I'm just going to throw that out there. I'm willing to cut something else to make room for that.
So at this point, it sounds like the only things would be up for consideration were the rest of the mental wellness. I didn't see anyone else talking about anything else. So I, I don't necessarily want to send you all back either. I guess my only thought is like Councilmember Trine did, just totaling up the thought, if we want to put that as our bucket C for the mental wellness piece, that could just be like, this could be considered instead of having everyone start again, or not again, but add. Does that, would that work? Does that work? So the only, I think you and Councilmember Trine have been talking about the mental wellness bucket. So instead of them having, do a bucket C, just looking at these ones that either didn't receive full request or didn't receive any dollars, if we just looked at that as our additional during the actual-
That's a pretty big bucket there. So that's like another $60,000. And so that's why I was asking if the, if when they did their stack ranking, I wasn't sure if the commission had sort of, were there another five that if they could move the line down a little bit more, they would know what those recommendations were? Because they may or may not just say, I want to fully fund one that's been partially funded, or I want to fund one that didn't get any funding at all. Because they have such good criteria, that's what I was kind of looking for in that delta.
So, so we did fund, you know, we're recommending $185,000 to the mental wellness bucket. That includes the fully funding a therapist at CrossPath to the tune of, you know, almost $93,000. So, you know, and that was the one we kind of talked to, the deepest impact is, it was, I believe, 200 residents would be served. And so I'm not sure how much money you're talking or what kind of impact, you know, how much additional money? But, you know, we felt like, as a group, that the amount that we had funded to mental wellness, based on the applications we received, as well as some of the cross, you know, the funding that reaches across all the groups, that I'm not sure that there was, but I don't believe there's anything else big that was, we thought we would fund.
Just clarification, that that Youth Eastside Service, CrossPath, which is fully funded, is the continuation of that 2019 that you're talking about?
There wasn't another proposal, grant application for another counselor. So we prioritized that counselor. If there was, we might have funded a second counselor, but we didn't have a proposal for that to review.
Commission members, they can't hear you on the rest of the call if you don't speak into the mic.
No, no, you're right. And can I also just add to what the commissioners are saying? With mental wellness, we actually, in the cultural inclusion bucket, we have two programs specifically connected with mental health support for youth. Just bring that to your attention.
So I'm not really sure where we're at now. It seems about an impasse. I am good with the recommendations. I don't mind considering more mental wellness. Also, that is very near and dear to my heart, my wife being one of those therapists. So I understand that, but I'm very hesitant to- So I understand that, but I'm very hesitant to send anything back at this point. Go ahead, yes.
Mayor, if I may, one option for council to consider is, as you are actually in deliberation over the budget, council members could consider a budget amendment to add a, a funding bump to, and ask the commission to go back and do a abbreviated process after the fact, if you will, to say, in essence, what would be the next things if you got, and then council would just have to decide on a dollar amount and, and send it forward. That, that is the option. And it, that way, when we're in the budget process, it's very clear about what council's direction is at that point, rather than trying to figure it out right at the moment. I think what I'm hearing from council is that you are accepting and want to move forward with the current funding level as been, has been proposed by the commission and for whom they are funding as part of that. And then we can sort out the rest of it if council so chooses to direct me to add funding to the commission to ask them to look at who else might require funding.
Thank you so much, Scott. Does that work for everybody? Cool. And then that will give you a little more rigidity if you move forward. Okay, I think you are off the hook now. Yeah. Thank you all so much. Yay. So next, the transportation impact fee update, I think, is if Audrey is on, or Doug, one of them.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I think while they're booting up, I'll just introduce the transportation team as they are coming up. And as you all will recall, this is a ongoing conversation that has started back with All Things Transportation from earlier in the spring. And we asked for your patience while we came back with what are the next steps that we need to do? And, and this is the first step in that process. So with that, I will turn it over to Audrey Starcy, who's the interim Public Works Director, and have her introduce the team.
Thank you very much, Scott. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. As Scott mentioned, I am Audrey Starcy, interim Public Works Director. Our team that is just now joining is the City Transportation Planning Division of Public Works. So this evening, Doug McIntyre, our Senior Transportation Planning Manager, will be presenting along with Lindsay Channing, our Transportation Planner. And they will be joined by John Giariducci of FCS Group. He is a principal of that consulting firm. And you might recognize John a little bit, he has presented to you the last few months off and on with the stormwater rate study as well. So now that everyone is on board, whenever the team is ready to go ahead and get started on your presentation, thank you.
Great, thank you, Audrey. I'm gonna kick the presentation off, give me just a moment to share my screen. All right, council. Good evening. As Audrey mentioned, I'm Lindsay Channing, I'm the Transportation Planner here with the City of Sammamish. And this evening, we're going to be giving you some basics on the transportation impact fees. Right, there we go. So as Audrey mentioned, John Giariducci of the FCS Group is our consultant for us on this project. His contact information is on the screen. We'll have it up again at the end if you're not able to capture it at this point. He's done a lot of great work for us and we're excited to be bringing this forward to restart the process. So this evening, we are here to talk about the Transportation Impact Fee Update Project. We would like to give you a brief history and status of this project along with just an educational piece of what traffic, excuse me, transportation impact fees are and how we use them. So as for history, we originally signed a contract with the FCS Group in September of 2018 to get this project going. They did some initial analysis in the fall of 2018, got it to a point where we were almost ready to start the public participation process. And in the third quarter of 2019, the project was placed on hold for two main reasons. One, there was some uncertainty on what the direction and what needed to be done surrounding the Holly Way project was. That has been determined, and so we're able to move forward on that front. And also, we do now have a current Transportation Capital Improvement Plan that was just passed this summer in July, I believe, outlining our project list over the next six years. A point that I'd like to point out as well this evening is this has gone by a number of different names. We are calling it the Transportation Impact Fee, TIF for short, T-I-F. It has been referenced in the past in the City of Sammamish as the traffic impact fees. And in our code, it's actually called street impact fees. We're recommending that we move forward with making edits and start referring to it as the transportation impact fees, as that's more of an industry standard, it's more in line with other jurisdictions in the state and with the RCW. So we will be referring to it as the transportation impact fees going forward in our presentation. We're also moving forward with this work because it was on our list of 2022 work items for the Transportation Planning Division. You can see that here on that right-hand column outlined in red. There's, we've done a lot of work in a sequential order, and this is one of the next items that we're excited to be able to start digging into and move through the process. With that, I'm going to turn this over to John, who is going to give us background and a presentation on the basics of transportation impact fees. John?
Thank you. Thanks, Lindsay, and thank you, Mayor and Council. So we'll start with some, some, some real basics. What, what is an impact fee? An impact fee is, this is a one-time charge paid at the time of development by new development. So already developed property, unless it redevelops, does not pay an impact fee. There are certain requirements in statute noted, the highlights in red here. I said imposed upon development. So at the, at the time of development, the charges have to be, and the facilities that will serve, that it's paying, that the charge is paying for have to reasonably relate to the new development. And the impact fee can't exceed a proportionate share of the growth-related system infrastructure that's being paid for by the impact fee. We follow the law very carefully. There's a lot laid out in 8202. Among the many provisions, we have to account for other funds, other non-impact fee funds, and make sure that we're not relying solely on impact fees and, and again, exceeding the proportionate share provision that new growth is limited to pay. The system improvements that are paid for by the impact fee and, and calculated as part of the impact fee calculation, as I mentioned before, have to be reasonably, reasonably related to the new development, not the specific development, but new development throughout the city. They can't exceed a proportionate share of the costs of system improvements. And then those improvements must reasonably benefit new development in that city. In the case of a, of a developer building a, a project on the project list as a condition of development, you have to give them credit for that system improvement against their impact fee. There are also provisions about how the impact fees must be accounted for and spent. You can only spend them on projects that are in the capital facilities plan element of the comprehensive plan. So they've got to be on the adopted project list in order for impact fee money to be spent on them. You have to spend them within 10, 10 years. That hasn't often been a problem, but if you don't spend the money within 10 years, then there are provisions providing for them to be paid back. So the math is pretty straightforward, and I'll focus on the, the middle section of this, this graphic, what we're calling the future facilities component. This is the traditional impact fee calculation, and it starts with a list of projects, in this case, the Transportation CIP. And what we have to do is isolate the, the growth-related or capacity-increasing portion of each project on that list and the sum total of those growth-related project costs divided by the growth that is projected for that planning period, and then usually expressed in trips or trip ends. That gives us our, our future facilities component of the impact fee. Sometimes we find that there is a capacity in the existing transportation system, where you might have a recent project that was built to accommodate not only current traffic, but future traffic. That existing extra capacity can be, can be the basis of a, of a reimbursement, if you will. And it, that, that's what that existing facilities component is. Usually, it's a much smaller number if there is an existing facilities component, but the two together equal the total impact fee. It's intended to represent a share of the infrastructure needed to serve that new unit of development. Some of it may have already been built, but the bulk of it is still to be built to serve So some of the key inputs that we use in updating a transportation impact fee are shown here. The project list is one of the, the very most important. We're distinguishing system improvements here from local or project improvements. So we're talking about, you know, projects that the city would build, not necessarily mitigation that a, a development would do as a condition of development. We can't exceed the proportionate share for growth. That's why we go through and identify the growth share of each project. Got to be consistent with the capital facilities plan element of the comprehensive plan, so it's got to be that adopted list. And I mentioned capacity to be added. We need to know how much of those projects are adding capacity for future users. The denominator is that trip growth estimate. So we, we estimate growth in trips over the planning period. That will be the denominator in the calculation. Transportation assets are useful if there is to be any kind of an existing facilities component. We'll want to know estimates of the current street infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, so that existing asset cost or facilities cost and land use data is very useful there. So the current charge for the City of Sammamish is, is shown here for a single-family residence, a new single-family residence, $14,204. All other land uses, and actually this applies to single-family as well, they're based on that unit charge of $14,064 per peak hour vehicle trip. So when a, a new development comes on, you will look at the land use for that development and the square footage. And then there, we have a resource called the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual that actually has trip generation statistics for hundreds of different land uses. So you could look up a land use and see how they generate trips on average, depending on the size of that establishment, and calculate their impact fee based on their, the trip generation estimate for that specific land use. So that's how the charges are currently done, and that's how they would be done in the update. The analytical steps are shown in the bottom of this, of this slide. We estimate the growth in peak hour vehicle trips, allocate project costs to growth, divide the dollars by the growth in trips, and develop that schedule by land use.
All right, well, with that, we are continuing to work on our analysis with our consultant team and updates. Since we were picking it up from 2018, 2019, there were some updates and some evaluation that needed to be done on this project. So that is continuing through the fall of 2022. Our plan at this point is in the winter and spring of 2023 to do the public process, which would include the public comment periods, the sessions with Planning Commission, and then bringing it back to City Council for the public hearings, leading to a decision made by council on updating the transportation impact fees. So the purpose, like was stated earlier of this evening, was to really give a basic overview of transportation impact fees, let you know that we're starting to work on this again. And we really wanted this to be a question and answer session between council and our staff and consultant team. Before I turn it over, though, we did receive one question earlier today that I wanted to address before we move on. I'm gonna go ahead and stop sharing my screen for the time being. But with that, the question we received earlier today was, is there an opportunity to implement some sort of CPI for our fees so that when there's an increase in costs like inflation, time, the value of money, et cetera, our traffic, our transportation impact fees are keeping up with that? Generally, the answer is yes, we can do that. We can amend our code, and that's something that staff has been discussing with the consultant team over the last few years. We can update our code to do an index of that sort. MRSC, the Minnesota Research Center, gave examples that there are some cities that do that. One that comes to mind is the City of Federal Way. They use that. Another great example is a neighbor, neighboring city to us, and that's the City of Izakua. They also have an indexing opportunity so that that eliminates the need for the legislative body to have to do a formal rate setting process on an annual basis. There's just a touch point every few years, and then a, a more in-depth review in line with the comprehensive plan update and your 20-year project list that John was talking about earlier. Our consultant recommends using the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. It's known as the ENR for inflation because it's specific to construction costs. Izakua is using that index. Federal Way uses a consumer price index, a more general one from the research that we did. So with that, unless, John, you have any follow-up to what I just stated, or there's additional questions to our response to this question, I'm gonna turn it over to council. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Lindsay. I am looking for hands. I know we had quite a few emails too, so thank you, Doug, for responding to those as well. Councilmember Howe?
Thank you for the presentation, very useful. My question has to do with, if I understood that correctly, we have 10 years to use those funds when we get them. How good are we at doing that in prior years?
Yeah, I can, I can take a stab at that. So I, I don't know if there's a way to like grade it or anything like that, but suffice it to say that we do have some fees that are getting close to the 10-year limit, and we do need to use those. So if that's, if that's any indication, there are some cases where we, we do take some time to use them. If you recall from the presentation, we have to have a project list, and the fees can only be used on those projects, so they can't be used for any projects. They're relatively restricted funds. So sometimes we do run into some challenges, but there are a few funds that we need to spend.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I might have a couple of questions. I noticed that other cities may, their fees may be based on zones in different areas of the city. We don't do that. Is there a reason? And what is the advantage of having them in zones?
Technically speaking, we do use a zone, and the zone is the city boundaries. So we have one, effectively one zone. John can maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but for a city our size and the way that our land uses, it doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense, and it adds some administrative layers to the program. So historically, we've just used the one zone. I don't know, John, if you want to add to that?
I'm happy to. The other, the other disadvantage of, of breaking a service area out into zones is that it, it reduces the flexibility that the city has in spending the money. If you collect money in one zone, then you need to spend the money in that zone. So it, it reduces the city's buying power and its ability to execute the capital plan because it's, because it's uh, because it's, because it's limited to those zones. There, there's a, a really important, uh, court case called, uh, Dribic versus the city of Olympia, where the city of Olympia had a, uh, citywide structure for its impact fees. And, uh, the challengers said that, uh, they needed to break it up into zones. And the court said, no, they don't, that, that a single service area is fine for a city that size. So, um, certainly that would apply to the city of Subhamish.
Great. Um, my other question was that I noticed in the, like, the different fees, um, like single family was, was one rate. And then there were different exceptions, like A D U, you know, um, are charged impact fees. But there's a category for apartments and an apart, uh, section for low-rise condo and townhomes. Does that include duplexes and triplexes? Cause there's no mention of those specific types.
I think those fall under multifamily, but I'm, but, uh, I'm, I'm not positive about that. Uh, it's, it's all based on the trip generation statistics for those individual land uses.
Okay. I mean, I didn't see a specific, um, line for multifamily. So perhaps that's something that you could look into, Doug.
Yeah, we can definitely confirm that. Thank you.
And my other question was just kind of a general question that, um, among all cities, um, in Western Washington, seventy-three cities were the highest. And that was due that, due to that we have no bypass. Um, what does that mean?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Do you mean, when you say bypass, do you mean, um, like an exemption process? Is that?
Um, there was a line item where there was a chart that showed, I don't know if you sent it out, it was MSRC that showed the seven cities. And at the very bottom, it was explanations for, um, the why our rate was at fourteen thousand. And it said that the primary, um, reason was because we have no little bypass. No, we have no or very little bypass.
Okay. I'm not finding that. What I think, hmm, we have to probably do some more research on that. I, yeah, I think we need to do a little bit more digging on that. And I'm not sure I'm understanding exactly what that's referring to.
Okay, I'll, I can, um, send you where the, the info to, like where I found it.
That would be excellent. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so just a quick question. When was the last time we did like a full rate study?
Uh, that was in twenty fourteen.
Twenty forty. That, that was like an, an update, was it? And we had already done like the full rate study prior to two thousand and fourteen. Would that be right?
Yeah, I believe it's sort of one, one cohesive effort.
Okay, where would I find that study? Is that, is that on the city website? Where would I find that?
Probably, uh, we could send you a copy though. We can send one.
Oh, that would be great. Um, thank you, Doug. And then, did I have any other question? I think that's it. Thank you, Doug. I appreciate that.
Thank you. No problem.
I do have one last question for the, um, I'm just looking at the E N R index because I've never heard of that. So it has like the construction, construction cost index and building cost index. So are those two separate? And then how do those compare to the CPI? And you can get that via email. You don't need to do that right now.
I think I'm going to need to, uh, ask John for some.
That would definitely be John. Yeah. I didn't know if you use both in that or just choose one. But yeah, and you can also just send via email. That would be helpful.
I mean, in, in a nutshell, the CPI is much more localized, but it doesn't represent the types of costs that you would see in major capital construction. The E N R Construction Cost Index is s- specific to capital projects, but it's a much broader index. So it, it, it tends to be a little less volatile, but less localized as well. But we can get you, but that doesn't get to your question about the two different indices, indices that the E N R uses and, and we can provide that afterwards.
Yeah, great. Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands. Um, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good night, everybody. So then our last is Fire Station Eighty-Two. I believe Anjali and some others will be coming on.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. And this evening we have an update for you on the progress of work for the Fire Station Eighty-Two renovation project. A feasibility study was presented to council in June of last year. And in November, council authorized a design contract with T C A Architects for the benefit of, uh, our new council members, and it has been a while for everyone. So we will provide a very quick summary of previous studies before going into the details of the design. I'll hand this off to Kevin T., Deputy Director, to introduce the team and make the presentation.
Thank you, Anjali, and, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and Deputy and Council, uh, Mr. City Manager. I want to just check with the city clerk. Are we, are you able to share our presentation? If not, I can, uh, pull it up myself here, but I was hoping you had it there.
I have it available. I just wanted to get the queue on when you would like it to present. I'll do it right now.
That'd be great. Yes. So while she's doing that, along with us tonight are, are, um, Senior, uh, Project Manager Sevda Baran and our architectural consultant, Eric Scher, uh, with T C A Architects. Uh, also with us is Dana Shutter, Deputy Chief, uh, with Eastside Fire and Rescue. I believe, I don't see him on there yet, but hopefully, uh, he'll be able to join us. So, tonight we wanted to, as, as Anjali mentioned, we wanted to give you an update on, uh, the progress of Fire Station Eighty-Two. This project is moving along and we felt like now would be a really good time to, uh, check back in with council. Next slide, please. We'll start off by reviewing the project objectives, um, the background. And then we know that council is particularly interested in sustainability options and that, that are being pursued, and we will, uh, review those. And then we'll go over the project design as well as the project estimate, timeline, and next steps. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, our objective tonight is to update council on the design development and the current construction estimate, uh, for Fire Station Eighty-Two. Next slide, please. Just as a matter of background, Fire Station Eighty-Two is located on Two Twenty-Eighth Avenue Northeast in the north part of the city. It was built in nineteen eighty-seven and is just under seventy-five hundred square feet. It is a, it is non-sprinkled and built to the nineteen eighty-five, uh, uh, building code. And, uh, the building is owned by the city and leased to Eastside Fire and Rescue. Uh, as we move to the next slide, uh, I will turn the presentation over to Eric Scher of, uh, T C A Architects. Eric, go ahead.
Also, it looks like.
Everybody, I was on mute.
Oh, Dana is also, um, just needs to be promoted. And then, yeah, all right. Sorry, Eric. Go ahead.
Oh, no, my apologies. Sorry about that. I like to talk. People can hear me. That would help. Good evening, everybody, and, and thank you very much for your time, uh, for us to present our, our project here. Just to go through a couple of, uh, brief things at the beginning. Back in twenty eighteen, um, our firm was hired to do an analysis of all three of your fire stations that you guys have, uh, eighty-one, eighty-two, and eighty-three. And that study, we, uh, were tasked with outstanding, identifying the outstanding issues. And then what would it take to bring all the fire stations into compliance with the codes, uh, regulations, et cetera? Uh, next slide, please. So, um, the findings that we had in that, yeah, was that, um, obviously these, uh, stations were built at a different time than today, so they don't meet current building codes. That doesn't mean that that's a bad thing. It's just considering when they were built. They don't meet the current ADA standards accessibility. Uh, they wouldn't meet the current fire code. Uh, they have outdated mechanical electrical systems. Uh, they don't meet trends in gender neutrality, and that is something new, uh, that's coming along with fire stations across the country. No separation between the contaminated and clean areas. And by contaminated, it just means where the apparatus are, uh, when they come back from a call. Uh, the equipment that they have on that they've either been in a call for an emergency, like an aid car or a fire, they come back. And then there's clean areas where they live, uh, essentially what we call the crew areas. Um, there's no current designated physical fitness spaces in the stations, and there was no designated room for their gear storage, uh, the stuff that they wear when they go on calls. Next slide, please. So a little bit more background. So Station Eighty-Two and Eighty-Three, um, together handle most of the calls, uh, within, uh, your town, your city. And, uh, Fire Station Eighty-Two was the best candidate that we took a look at to house the future possible advanced life support unit. So Station Eighty-Two is essentially what was decided to be the first station that we would take a look at, uh, renovate and figure out what we need to do based on the, um, capital improvement plan that you guys have. So we, T C A Architecture, uh, were hired to perform the feasibility study to renovate the building. Uh, just some quick background. Um, our firm is, actually specializes in doing fire stations, for those of you who don't know that. Um, we do them not only in Washington State, but we were hired by other architects across the country, uh, to design stations. So we're very familiar with that building type, just in case you didn't know that. Next slide. So after reviewing, uh, those studies, talking to the fire department, talking with, uh, you folks at the city, we came up with a plan, uh, what really needs to be done to Station Eighty-Two. Uh, the first thing was that we need, uh, different and better sleeping rooms. So there's six, a single occupant, uh, gender neutral, we call them, sleeping rooms. Um, we're going to upgrade AD for ADA, uh, brand new mechanical electrical systems, new fire sprinkler system, new fire alarm, uh, gear storage, all those things that I just talked about in the previous slide that we need, new fitness room. Um, there's going to be new restrooms, um, renovated restrooms on the first floor, and then a new restroom installed on the second floor, new kitchen and day room on the second floor. And we're going to remove, there's a, um, an existing heating system that's installed in the drains in the apparatus bay, which is odd. Um, so we're going to remove that. We won't need it anymore. Next slide, please. So this is an overall look, uh, site plan north being up. Now, so you can see Two Hundred and Twenty-Eighth Avenue there on the right-hand side. Um, we actually, um, made a concerted effort not to do a whole lot to the site. And so we really tried our best not to change a lot of the existing conditions around the perimeter. So the vegetation and things like that, um, are going to be left alone as much as possible. We're going to trim up some of the trees. If you've gone out there, you'll notice that their branches are all over the ground. So we're going to trim them up a little bit. New generator, new transformer. If you can see on the right-hand side there, uh, next to the street, on the upper right corner of the building, there's a little wavy thing going in there. We're going to provide a new access sidewalk to the street, which doesn't currently exist. Next slide, please. So to get into some little bit of detail quick, um, the blue area is the new addition that we're going to put on the building or is planned to be put on the building for the six new sleeping rooms. And that will allow them to have individual bunks. And then the lockers are on the outside. So if they come in while somebody is, maybe they've had a tough call the night before they're sleeping, they can get their gear out of their lockers without disturbing, um, them. So again, that accomplishes the gender neutral, uh, so anybody can sleep in there. It helps with snoring. Um, there's all kinds of things I could talk about for an hour about sleeping rooms, but I, I won't do that. Uh, the yellow is the renovated space within the existing footprint of the building. So there's going to be a new stair, new laundry, new electrical and mechanical spaces. Uh, the restrooms are all going to be completely redone so that they meet current code accessibility standards. Um, the classroom and the office are essentially getting a facelift. So new materials in terms of, uh, flooring and paint. Um, you'll see a new exercise room there. That's going to go inside of the current aid bay. Um, so we're able to close that off from the rest of the apparatus bay, provide its own mechanical system so that they have clean air in there and an access to the outside onto a patio. And then also new gear storage. Uh, there's also going to be an airlock. Um, it's essentially right there in the middle if you come up through the gray space. The gray space is the apparatus bay area, by the way. Um, there's an airlock in there, so when they go in there, they have a place to wash their hands, take their boots off. So when they go back into essentially the, most of the yellow area is the clean space. Next slide, please. This is the second floor, so, um, you'll come up the stairs. There is on, on the top of the sleeping room, gave us a great opportunity to provide a patio for the crew. Um, so that's what we're going to do. And there's going to be, they're not shown on there, but there's going to be planters up there that are going to have plants planted in them. And then in the yellow space, that's the renovated, uh, area of the building. So there'll be a new kitchen, new day room, new dining. Uh, there'll be a place for them to do their work, uh, so they can close themselves off from that activity. And you'll see a new mechanical room, uh, new server room and a new toilet in there. Uh, next slide, please. So this gives you just a real quick snapshot. Uh, the top photo there with the red in it is essentially the part of the building that we're going to be ripping up in order to accommodate the new. And then below that is, uh, and again, this is the face north. So if you were standing there on the north side, this is what you would see. So you can see the new addition there and then on the, uh, far right side, that's where the new sleeping rooms would go. Next slide, please. And again, from another angle, this is, uh, looking west, sort of toward the back. You can see on that left-hand side, that red is what's going to be changing. And then the new stuff down below on the, uh, lower left. Next slide, please. That's kind of what it looks like, a little bit of an elevated view. You'd have to be a drone probably to see that or stand up behind on the site. But that gives you an idea of the form that the building took. We tried to keep it as simple as possible, um, not only aesthetically, but also, uh, to save money. So that way, like you can see where it gave them that opportunity to have that space on the top of the roof there for the patio. Next slide, please. Um, we know sustainability is very important to the city. Uh, one of the, one of the first things we did was look at project goals. And that, of course, has to do with the firefighters and emergency responders themselves. Um, so our goal is to protect them. And so we've done that with, by providing a separation of spaces in there and providing a better environment for them to work from the dirty to the clean area. And then in terms of response. So we take a look at a fire station. We always want to see if they get a call in the middle of the night or they're up in the day room, what do they have to do to get into the apparatus bay, to get into their vehicle, uh, as quick as possible? Cause that's their goal. They're actually mandated to do that quickly. From a sustainability perspective, um, we know we want to, uh, take a look at reducing things, you know? So we don't want to buy something, um, that's going to have a short lifespan. We want to reuse what we can and we want to recycle. Um, so for example, the contractor and the specifications will have, if they have to take drywall off or they're going to do some framing, they're going to be required in the specification to check that to a recycling plant if it exists, which they do. Um, we're going to try to create and protect natural habitats, conserve energy, conserve water and foster healthy neighborhoods. And so those kind of the, those are the option, sustainability options and the goals that the city has. Next slide, please. So, um, we are going to, uh, use, uh, recycled materials where we can. There's going to be insulated, but all the new stuff in the building has to meet the current code. So the, all of the new walls, uh, will be upgraded to have more insulation and then they'll be more, uh, sustainable in terms of high, uh, higher energy efficiency. We're going to have, uh, brand new, uh, mechanical electrical systems. There's going to be new water heater, um, heat pumps, specialty lighting and daylighting options. So all the lighting these days is much more efficient than the existing lighting that's in that station now. Um, we're going to be, uh, doing. We're going to be doing rough in work for putting potential future rooftop solar panels. So we'll have conduit being run to the roof so that that can be put on. Low impact development of landscaping. As I mentioned before, we're making a concerted effort not to change much of the landscaping, but we do have some. We're removing some of the. I just drew a blank. The. The vegetation in the front that is, well, it's not very good because it catches on fire really easily. So we're going to be removing that and replacing it with other low growing vegetation, low drought tolerant vegetation. Juniper, that's the word I was looking for. I'm sorry. So the junipers that are in front of the station are not fire wise plants as they call them. So we're going to be removing some of those. There's going to be a new electronic reader board proposed for the front of the station. And that will allow the city and the fire department to post community messages. Maybe there's something going on at the station or in the city, or maybe there's an emergency message that I think you guys need to post. And that can go on that sign. So that'll be nice to have. Next slide, please. So looking at the cost, we did a cost estimate back in two thousand and one. And so that was the, oh, could you go back? Yeah, we did a cost as two thousand and one and then we did a new one this year. And you'll see that not surprisingly really, there is an increase in cost. And that's for lots of different reasons. In a, in a remodel, when we first start the project, we try to do our best to estimate what we're going to be doing. In the end, when we finally have our documents put together, there's lots of different things that end up happening. For example, on the lower floor, we found that it was going to be much more efficient. To remove a lot of the concrete, given that we've got all new bathrooms, all new plumbing in the floor. So there was a lot more concrete work than we originally had planned. There's other things like the design contingency. You'll see that that's in the two thousand and twenty one plan, but it is not in the DD estimate that you see there. And the reason for that is, is that now that we're basically done with design, we don't need that particular contingency there anymore. And then if you go down further, there's furniture and equipment that's in there and there's taxes, testing and permits. And the testing facility price went down because the fire department, it was pretty awesome. They found a place to put the crew in a different apartment. We originally, we were thinking that they were going to have to go into a trailer on the site. And the fire department was able to find an adequate place to move the crew so that they're not in the station. So essentially that's, that's a real quick broad brush on the costs for that. Next slide, please. So Kevin, I think you're starting again, correct?
Yeah, thank you, Eric. Yeah, I'd like to just touch on the timeline a little bit and review where we are and, and in the process. The design contract with TCA was authorized back in the fall of last year, two thousand and twenty one. And then we have recently, this fall submitted for building permits. We plan to go out to bid and award a contract in the spring of two thousand and twenty three. And then the construction would start in the summer of two thousand and twenty three. And we believe it would conclude in the spring of two thousand and twenty four. We have also requested the additional funds as part of the two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and twenty four budget. And it is in the, in the general government CIP included in there. And then we will just a reminder that we would, we will return to council in the spring for approval of a construction contract. So next slide, please. So with that, we'd like to say thank you to council for listening and we are happy to answer any questions. And as I mentioned, we've got Eric and Sebda and also Dana Shutter from Eastside Fire and Rescue. If there are questions for them, Dana may need to be promoted to a presenter. I'm not sure, but. Thank you.
Councilmember Nupure.
Thank you for the presentation, Kevin and team. Two questions. One is I saw in the presentation that this building was called an essential building. So just wanted to understand what, what's the definition of that essential facility, sorry? And then I'm not remembering the specifics, but what's the requirement around like? An electronic board, because I think when we were on the planning commission, we went through this. And I think there are lots of restrictions around that, especially in our city. And especially when there isn't one existing, I, I thought it was not, we didn't want to have electronic boards. So just those two clarifications, please.
This is Eric. Thank you. Those are very good questions, both of them. I, Dana, I don't know if you want me to tackle that. The, the simple answer to the essential building question is that under the code, a fire station is considered an essential facility. And so by that, it, it has all kinds of ramifications. One is that in an earthquake, the simplest thing to say is it's got to be the last thing standing kind of a thing. Because they're, they're there to rescue other people. So the building is designed and engineered at a higher standard than other facilities. So that's, that's essentially the simplest explanation of that. On the electronic board, we've, we've talked about this with our group, our city group. And it's our understanding the city is going to allow it. We did just turn in the plans to the permit office. So I suppose there's always a possibility that somebody's going to come back and nix it. But it's my understanding that within the, in the pre meetings that we had that it's okay to use. Am I wrong about that, Sebda? Kevin, I think that's right. Or Angelie, you would know too, I suppose. I believe that's correct.
I didn't catch that. Did you catch that? Oh, it's in for permitting. Thank you. I believe Councilmember Howe, then Deputy Mary Lamb, then Councilmember Stewart.
I have just a couple of questions. First of all, I know that this is certainly the first renovation in a long time. When do you anticipate the second one or the third rather? And do you do any pre-design effort to determine now when we have to do this again? This is what we do next. And my, my question kind of hinges on a couple of things. First of all, because they are our buildings and I look at that space and think, what else could I use that space for? Can it be? Does this become more meeting space, for example, in the third iteration of this thing? Or, or do fire stations not expand in that same way? Given your background with fire stations, I took a look at your work, Eric. He does a great work there.
Thank you.
Impressive. But I, you know, how often does this happen? Can we look to, is there anything we could do to make the third iteration better or easier? Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a tough question because as you can imagine, you know, it's kind of a very quick funny story. I, I was talking to one of the developers of, that was, that we became friends with that was in charge of the Oahu Hawaii. Fire department, they've got a hundred year plan. And it was when they were designing fire stations, they, because they have fifty of them, right? I mean, there, there's a massive amount of infrastructure. When they were building a new station, they had already had a replacement for that plans. Because they have to buy property and as you can imagine, like, like you guys too, actually, you know, it's very difficult to find property. So to take, go back to reality. Fire stations are, you know, designed for the time. So we don't want to go too overboard right now. So it, everything we're doing is meeting the current code. Some of it a little better, just because we have the opportunity to do that without a lot of cost change. And so that's, that's what we'll do to not only from an energy efficiency perspective, like having completely brand new mechanical systems and electrical and things like that. That will last you a lot longer than if we tried to just renovate it. You'd end up just putting a Band-Aid on something that you're going to have to remodel again in, you know, ten years. So you've got a brand new current code, very energy efficient mechanical system and electrical system and lighting. That's being put into the building. So typically a brand new fire station, we tend to call them fifty year buildings. But even then, back, you know, when this station was designed, no one could have imagined how fast things are changing. So, you know, when I started out as an architect, we didn't have a computer. We do everything with a pencil and a piece of paper. I mean, nobody could have imagined that we would need computer space and all that kind of stuff. I don't even have a space anymore for drawings. Nobody does it that way anymore. It's all on the computer. So I'm, I'm just using that as an example of trying to say, okay, so what's next? And so we do, as I said, we, we work with a lot of fire departments across the country. And a lot of people say, well, okay, that's, that was the perfect question, right? So what am I looking at? What can I do to this station that is going to happen later? What is going to happen later? So we're doing everything to your facility that we're aware of that could come up. Including making things like mechanical rooms a little bit bigger. There's never enough room for my electrical engineer, it seems. You know, there's always another electrical panel that needs to go somewhere. And those always seem to find a way to, to fit. It just happens. So I feel pretty good personally about what we're doing with the facility. We're, we're learning some lessons as we go through this design and put the drawings together for the next one for eighty three. And I know this is a conversation about eighty two, but so that's next on the, on the agenda as far as I know. So I don't know if that really answered your questions, Karen, but.
It actually kind of does because I was trying to get to what, what, what can live longer? You know, what is the lifespan? And knowing that we are going to have to do this again, as I looked at multiple, being able to use the same space for different things. So I, I look to the future as to build once, but use multiple different times in multiple different ways for the community benefit. So that, that, that's always an eye that I have kind of looking forward as to how else could we leverage what we have.
And I just wanted to add that there is a community meeting space at this fire station.
Right, right. I know.
The other thing we did, you know, we really tried very hard not to expand the outside of this building. Even though the sleeping rooms really had no choice to make it work. But we had to be careful that we didn't. One of the reasons that the generator is in the parking lot and not in the landscaping is we didn't want to trigger the water quality. Standards that we would have had to review or you'd be probably, and I don't know this for a fact, so don't quote me, but. Digging a big hole in the ground and putting a vault in there that's to hold stormwater. And so, you know, the price would have gone sky high and you would have had, your building wouldn't be any different. So we were trying to be very careful about that sort of thing.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Mary Lamb.
Thanks for the presentation, Eric. Angelie, you probably know I'm going to ask this question about solar. So since we're doing a feasibility study for Fire Station eighty two. Has the train left the station for this fire station? Or is there something we can use from the feasibility study, what if and when we get it done to apply to this one?
Well. Go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead, Eric.
Oh, oh, I, I was just going to say, so the train never leaves the station, right? There's, there's always an opportunity to take a look at something. It was our understanding when we went through this the first time and a lot of you I know are, are on the council that are new. But we, we, we decided, we, meaning you guys, decided that we were going to take a look at this station. And then maybe at this particular point, not put the panels up there, but we would provide the opportunity to do it at another time. And so that's the, that's the path. That's the train, to use your analogy. That's the train that we've been following. We have been talking to consultants about getting more data, more information on what it would need to try to put it on that building. We did, I think one of the slides that we threw on here, just in case that question came up. I don't know, Kevin, who was in charge of the slides? Can we pull that back up? I just want to point something out to you, Amy. On the building. It's, it's a, just as I'm talking here, it's a very difficult roof to put solar panels on. It wasn't designed for it. We do fire stations with those on there. I mean, the station is in at seventy two, I think in the town of Issaquah down there. That's a very energy efficient fire station. It's got solar panels on it, but it was designed for it. So. Waiting for that slide to come up. Anyway, so yeah, again, there's, there's the roof. And it's hard to tell a little bit, but it's, it looks nice when it's done this way. Because it's all broken up. So you don't have this big swath of roof, but it's not good for solar panels. So you only get a few in each one of those little spaces. And it's better to try to put them facing south, of course. I mean, and you can put them in the east and the west and things like that. You'll also notice that those trees are casting a shadow down onto that parking lot. Well, depending on the time of the year, that actually covers part of that roof. And so it, it takes out the energy that you would get from it. So it's not a terribly efficient roof to try to put panels on. So that was another reason that, I think we're taking another look at it.
So it looks like there's a whole new section, like that area above the beds is a whole new section.
A flat part up there.
That you would have to put a new roof on it. So could you not construct the roof in a way that it's more fitting for solar, that it would work better with solar?
Yeah, we, we could have. Part of the reason that it's flat is because that way we didn't have to try from a design perspective. Didn't try to have to tie it into the existing roof or the new one that we were making. It made it a lot more complicated. And it also provided an opportunity for the crew to have a patio. Because typically in almost every single fire station we do, the crew have an outside space that they can go into for their barbecue. And just to kind of decompress some of the calls they go on, as you can imagine, are pretty rough. So they oftentimes like a quiet space to go out and just kind of do that. So that's what that space was designated for.
Could I add a little bit here? Just wanted to mention that. Counsel, you, you are aware that we are bringing a proposal from a consultant to do an analysis of solar on, on Fire Station eighty three. As I, as I spoke with that consultant, what they do is they can, they can do a computer model of a building, any building. And do an analysis of where the panels would be placed and what kind of return on investment. The city could expect based on the output of those panels. So this is kind of getting the cart a little ahead of the, the horse. But wanted to just mention that, that if, when we bring that, that proposal, we could ask this same consultant to do this analysis on Fire Station eighty two. It sounds like that's a desire. And I think that they have the, the ability to do that and to give us the good return on investment. Information that you're looking for.
That would be awesome. Thank you, Kevin, because I'd really like to have some more on this, on this, on this building. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. And you know, most companies will actually do that analysis for free. You don't even have to pay for it. So it would be interesting to understand maybe what that is before we spend the money. It sounded like you were putting in some of the infrastructure in the building and doing rough ins. And I think we should know whether it's feasible to use solar on this building before we spend any money on that, especially given the overruns. So on the overruns, are there any areas where we could cut back to save money? Because I, I didn't, I know you're going to be shocked, but I didn't actually jot down the, the difference. But I think it was about a million and a half to two million increase. So are there areas where we can cut back on the designs for now? And maybe think about doing some of that in a couple of years. So we're not taking all of that hit in the next budget cycle?
So Eric or Kevin, the scope of the project hasn't gone up at all between the two versions we've shared, right? So it, it's what we're doing is the bare minimum for the needs of. Eastside Fire and Rescue, primarily it's the gender neutral, new rooms, right? That is a bulk of the cost. And then the electrical costs went up significantly. I don't know if you pointed that out, Eric, and if you want to elaborate on that a little bit.
Yeah, you, you're right. And unfortunately. Yeah, you, you're right. And unfortunately, last spring, I don't know, you, you guys are probably aware of this, there was a huge jump in cost for everyone across the board. We had a couple of fire stations that were, went out to bid right after that happened. And many of them came in hundreds of thousands of dollars over the estimate. So the only good thing I could tell you out of this is at least you know, because there were a couple of projects that, that they didn't know that was going to happen. The other thing that's happening, there's, there's a lot of uncertainty in the market. So there's still, in some projects, and I know you guys have other projects that are going on in the city as well, that I, I believe are facing the same situation. But it's, some of the electrical things, and they're simple things. It's like, one month you can get it, and the next month you can't. And so there's some uncertainty built in. So our cost estimator takes that into consideration. The other thing, and I know it, it was probably only 65 or $70,000 or something, but when we first started this project, we didn't think that we were going to have to do a fire sprinkler system in the entire building. We were kind of hoping that we would get away with just doing it in the sleeping rooms. But it's a fire station. It's a good idea to have a fire sprinkler in there anyway. But so.
Don't they have hoses? Do they really need a sprinkler?
Think, huh? No, you're, you're.
Sorry, I'm just kidding.
There's, yeah, I know you are. There's a couple of bad scenarios I could tell you about where a fire station's caught on fire. So they all had to run out of the building. But anyway, you don't want that happening.
Well, maybe you don't have the barbecue on the roof, and then you don't need it in any way. No, but so I guess my question, I know that the scope of the project hasn't changed, and just the cost went up. So that was my question was, there isn't anything in there that we could delay, right? That wouldn't, that we could, you know, put off a couple of years, just so, again, we're not taking a $2 million hit next year for this one project.
Yeah. And again, I'd, I'd have to go back to what Angelie said, or maybe have Dana have an opportunity to, to speak, because I, I couldn't tell you as a fire station designer what I would take out of there. We, as we said, we, we don't have a lot of fluff or any fluff that I'm aware of that we don't have to do to, to protect the crew and make it better for them. I'm not sure what I would tell you. If somebody else has a comment.
Like, I didn't know. Like, is it required to have a gym? Like, is that, I mean, I'm not trying to be mean, but is that really a requirement?
It actually is. The fire department is, they have a fitness program that they have to meet, right, Dana? Am I not? Yeah. So there's a, there's a fitness thing that they have to have. So that's, that's the easiest way to do it, is to provide them a facility to do that. And again, right now, it's sitting in the apparatus bay where the trucks are. So it's not great. So that's why we moved it.
Do we know if there'll be any operational savings, like, since we're going to be more energy efficient? If we'll see any benefit from, say, the water heater? I'm assuming is the water heater electric, I'm hoping, and not gas?
Yes, that's, I believe that's correct. I'd have to double check that, but I believe that's correct. We're really trying to, I mean, things are getting mandated that way, as you, as you probably are aware. Gas is going bye-bye.
Yeah, not fast enough. So that's what I'm hoping. We're not, we're not planning on pumping gas into the building. We're going all electric. And things, like you said, we'll have new modern lights. Will they have things like the automatic shut off? So I know that can save on commercial buildings. That can save quite a bit when things are turning themselves off when people aren't around. Surprisingly, that can add up savings rather quickly. So I'm hoping we'll at least see some cost savings on the operations side after the remodel.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, council? We are all good here. Thank you, Eric, and everyone for your presentation.
Thank you, council.
All right. So do we have any verbal council reports?
I just want to confirm, because we have our EFR meeting on Thursday, that everyone is good with the budget. Any questions, concerns? All right.
Cool.
Thanks.
Scott, do you have anything?
Mayor, not today. I will have one for next week, but nothing for tonight.
Can't wait. Okay. All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry. Deputy Mary Lamb?
I do have a Pick Meeting Public Issues Committee meeting Wednesday, tomorrow. And I'll be going into the meeting with the items that I emailed everybody. And they're, just a reminder, there's just all discussion topics.
Yeah, thank you for that. All right. Now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry. Aye, opposed? All right, 7-0. We are adjourned. See, everybody. Thank you.